To be withdrawn from the consent agenda.
Withdrawn from the consent agenda.
It's what our rules say.
Good.
Okay, so we are to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the agenda as presented in the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, will move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye, opposed? That motion passes. Item number six, which are board and commission appointments, this is utility advisory committee, page twenty-three in the board packet.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, Heidi Baron, Serna Way City Manager. You have before you a recommendation from a subcommittee of the utility advisory committee to appoint Fred Springsteen to a position on the utility advisory committee, and I believe Fred is with us tonight. You also have a recommendation that for the appointment, and it's actually to acknowledge the appointment from Central Washington University's representative of Jeff Busan for another term. And I believe Jeff is here tonight as well, yes?
Mr. Springsteen or Busan, do either of you want to speak to the council and to the audience regarding these appointments? You don't have to. Okay? You're welcome. Just introduce yourself and...
He's in the back of the room. I want to thank you for inviting me to come introduce myself. I've lived in Ellensburg now about five years and I've looked around and the utility advisory committee looks to me like a good fit for me from where I've been in my life experiences. I was born and raised in and around Portland, Oregon, educated down there, Pacific University, with a bachelor of science degree in chemistry and also in economics. I graduated in sixty-five, and as you might be aware of what was going on back in those days, I joined the military in sixty-five and was discharged in seventy-three. After that, I embarked on a forty-year career in trust banking. Standard joke was I was probably the only banker in the neighborhood that worked for a bank as long as he did and never made a loan, so anyway. I worked with orphans and widows for the most part, managing assets and things of that sort. But over time, I belonged to Rotary for, I don't know, ten or fifteen years, and also have joined here now, I'm a noontime Rotary downtown, and where we do a lot of community service and different things. Also, when I was living in Newport, which is a town about the size or not too much different from Ellensburg, except it's on the ocean, I was part of the budget committee for about six years. And there, and I don't know how you operate here, but there, members of the budget committee are each department head along with civilian members or community members. And I was one of the community members, and like I said, I was on that committee for about six years. And part of what I contributed was finance for the task force, well, we had to install a new water system. My part of it was not to worry too much about where the water went and how it got there, but how to pay for the system. And the common opinion at the time was just to raise, let's just raise the water bill for all the residents of the town. And it didn't sound quite right to me, and so I raised an objection. And as things happened, I was put in charge of figuring out what it was we were supposed to do. And we wound up doing a loan and worked out pretty well. One of the more important things that I look at around Ellensburg, and after having been here, like I say, for about five years or so, is growth. In order to stay ahead or at least keep up with growth in a community like this, you're going to have to have infrastructure expansion. And the trick is, where do you expand to? And what do you expand? Is it electrification? Is it water, sewer, gas main? What is it? And it looks to me like there's a lot to be desired. You guys have here, we have a lot of flat land. Where I came from, there was very little flat land. You're sitting on a rock, and when it rains, it all washes off into the ocean. Here, we don't have that problem. So we have choices, corporate folks, big box stores, entrepreneurs, you know, restaurants and lawyers and the typical kind of storefronts and strip malls and different things will need land, they will need infrastructure. And we're going to be, I'm sure, looking at all the options, seeing what's going to work and where you can expand to. There's a situation here where we've got, and this also, also I should mention, that while I was on the budget committee, I also sat on the board for the park and rec department. And one of the things that we did while I was on that board was to design and build a completely new freestanding recreational facility, which I understand from a lot of conversation and different things that have happened around here, that something along those lines might be happening here at some point. I will say that, just to decide, my two grandkids are on a swim team, a local, it's called Ellensburg area swim team, east. Some of you may have had kids or do have children or grandkids that are on that team. There are about fifty kids on that team between the ages of eight and eighteen. And right now, they are looking at the swimming pool at the university being closed.
Mr. Springsteen. Mr. Springsteen. Mr. Springsteen. Can I have you focus on your application for the utilities commission?
Excuse me, okay.
Solely, thank you.
Yeah, get off on a tangent, okay. Anyway, those are some of the kinds of things that I'm focused on, and if I can help or contribute in any way, please call on me, and I'm happy to help any way I can.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Springsteen?
Any questions or...
Nope, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jeff, Mr. Busan, you are welcome to speak.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Jeff Busan, and I'm the sustainability director at CWU. I've been serving on the UAC for the past two years. Thank you for inviting me to share a little bit more about my background and interests. Academically speaking, I have a bachelor's in political science with a focus in public administration and environmental policy. I also have a master's degree in climate science and solutions from Northern Arizona University. I've been working at CWU for the past two and a half years, I've been living in Ellensburg community for the past two and a half years when we moved here for the job. And the reason why I want to continue to serve on the UAC is to help ensure that we have affordable and reliable sources of energy for current generations and for future generations. I'll open up to questions.
Thank you, any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Do we do both these at the same time or because one's different?
I think you can do it in one motion with two separate actions. Mr. Springsteen would be an appointment and Mr. Busan would be a confirmation.
Mr. Mayor, I move the appointment of Frederick Springsteen to the utility advisory committee and the reappointment for another term of Jeff Busan.
Second.
And just point of clarification, this is a confirmation of CWU's selection.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Busan.
Thanks.
Okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to confirm the appointment of Mr. Busan and to approve the appointment for Mr. Springsteen to the utility advisory committee. Any discussion?
Just comment one, thank you both for applying there. Reminder to all the citizens that we have plenty of boards and commissions that have vacancies that we need people to be part of. See, all the people here, they're enthusiastically in support of the city and the actions that are making, so there are lots of positions available. I see seven here, so they're on environmental, LFao, lodging, planning, and UAC to join in. The only other thing that I'll say is simply because I work with Jeff and it's a CW appointment, I'll abstain on this particular one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye, opposed? That motion passes. And just for point of clarification, the left board is the retired firefighters and police officers.
Thank you.
It's their pension system. Okay, so before we go to item seven, we'll have our annual fireside chat. Okay, so I just wanted to go over sort of what our council rules are and how we set them. They were last approved in a six-one vote in May of 2024 by resolution 2024-13. The only person who voted no was council member Palmer, everybody else supported the rules. And I'm going to kind of walk through a little bit of this. So on the twentieth of May, we approved our rules. I'll go quickly. First of all, one thing that we need to make sure we remind is, is anytime you're not attending a meeting, we do have to publicly give a reason, that's in our rules. So I will make sure I do that from now on. Okay. Don't need that one. Okay. Prior to the vote of a motion to adopt a regular agenda, so this was the change I made, we were not going through the consent agenda, so I will do that from this point forward, you'll have to remind me probably a few times. Item five-two on the agenda indicates that any council member can place anything on the agenda for the next meeting. So all you have to do is ask, and it's automatically on the agenda, there's no way to avoid that. In terms of, exceptions, in terms of remarks from the public, just please indicate, or please sort of pay attention, our instructions are that remarks be made addressed to the council as a body, not to any individual member or staff member or member of the public. And we're not supposed to be asking questions of a council member or staff except through the presiding officer, so that comes through me. Now, we get to page fifteen, this is item seven-two-three, and this is our time limit, which again, we affirmed in May. And the passage reads, "Time may not be shared between members of the public in order to speak, and members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes." We will address the issue of interpreters here in the next few minutes. And then the total time for allocated is thirty minutes, and it takes a vote of the council to change that. These were the rules that six of us voted for in May of 2024. And it just says dissent. And then I'll get to on waiver of rules in effect, this is nine-seven, again, these are available on our website. Except, it says waiver of rules and their effect. Except as otherwise provided by law, any rule established by this chapter, so the council rules, may be waived upon affirmative vote of at least five members of the city council. So if we're going to change the rules, it's for this meeting, and it only applies to this meeting, it takes a vote of five people. If you want to talk about changing rules for the future, we have to put that on the agenda, as with any other item that we're going to talk about in front of the public. And that's all I need to go through. So, we are at item seven, which is citizen comment on...
Mr. Mayor, can I make the motion that we amend today's agenda to allow for interpreters to double the time for folks that need that?
If I could, the one thing I would change that, and I totally back it, I was going to make a very similar motion, is that the time of the interpreter doesn't take away from the thirty minutes. So it'd be a total of six minutes with three being the speaking, so it'd be six total, but it'd be because we're allowing the interpreter, and it shouldn't take away from other people's ability to...
So you're asking for the increase of the thirty minutes to thirty-three minutes? Or inclusive of the thirty minutes?
Yeah, basically, an additional three minutes per interpreter needed, if we needed multiple.
I think, can we make that more...
Not yet. Yeah, and that's another thing, you guys, we're not supposed to be, I guess for points of clarification, we can do so, we are not supposed to begin deliberating or discussing a motion until it's received a second.
Okay.
So...
Fair enough.
Once it receives a second, then we talk about it.
I'm fine with your amendment.
So why don't you second his motion and then amend his motion, and that's the process we'll go through, and we'll go through two votes.
Okay, motion, make them in, your motion.
So I'm going to amend Delano's motion to say that the addition...
I'll second Delano's motion.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Double the time needed for people who need an interpreter, need interpretive services available. And I will address that when we're done with this before we start.
Okay.
So that's the motion.
Yeah, and so my amendment would be that the additional three minutes, if an interpreter's needed, doesn't count negatively towards the overall thirty minutes, so just extend it by three minutes if an interpreter is needed.
Second.
So we have amendment to the original motion essentially waiving the time spent by the interpreter for any public speaker, is that...
That's correct. Yes.
Any discussion on that? This is open to public discussion as well. Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 I too will vote aye, opposed? That motion passes. Now we have an amended motion allowing for essentially double time for people who choose or choose to communicate through or need an interpreter to communicate, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that that time doesn't affect the overall thirty-minute cap that we set in May.
And that's just for tonight's meeting through this process?
Only affect tonight's meeting, we can't vote on anything that isn't on the agenda. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I too will vote aye, opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So we...
Mayor, I have a motion that I'd like to put...
Not this meeting?
No.
Okay.
Well, for a future meeting.
Okay.
Conversation with the DEI Commission, and by the way, I fully support the motion and amendment that we just passed, it's a nice equity move, an inclusion move. Request that city council revisit their council rules and make appropriate adjustments to be able to respond to any member of the public who needs an accommodation in order to participate in the government process. I'd like to have that conversation, oh, sorry.
I just need a second.
Second.
So we have a motion and second to docket council rules specifically addressing accommodation, but is that all you want? That's my question, is that the motion to just do the accommodation, or do you want to look at the council rules in total?
Well, look at the council rules and see where appropriate language might be needed, other places also.
So broadly docket council rules, but specifically address accommodation?
Right.
Okay. So I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to make sure we pass. Okay, so that doesn't need a motion, doesn't need a vote, it's council member requesting, and it's on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, so now we are going to do... Andrea? And you've listed DEI again with a smiley face.
Again. Hi, thanks for moving this so I can still talk into it, and yet, look at you, I love that part. Adriabesticchadano, County, Ellensburg is my city too, speaking as a parent. I went to the DEI Commission meeting this last week, and I told them how I felt, that when I think of DEI, I may not think of everything that's in their chapter nine, but I do think of the things that are happening at the state level. I don't think that there should be a differentiation between DEI at a state level versus city and Ellensburg. In the name of DEI, these things have happened at the state level, boys in the girls locker room, boys and girls sports, men and ladies bathrooms, children checking themselves out of school in the name of mental health, children being mutilated in the name of mental health, giving down payments to people with other people's tax money. It's all the influence of DEI. And then we have our own situation here in Ellensburg with a gentleman standing naked in the women's bathroom in our city pool. I went to the DEI to express this, and I have read chapter nine multiple times, and I was told that the state-level DEI is not Ellensburg's DEI, and yet I cannot differentiate between the two, because it is the DEI ideology, the core of DEI, which is the voices of the LGBTQ+ that has created those laws at the state level, and hence they are at the core of our DEI in Ellensburg. But as I said at the DEI Commission meeting, those on the DEI Commission who make recommendations to the city council of Ellensburg can't pick and choose what part they say they follow and what parts they say they don't. Don't take our chances away to be parents, don't spend our money on divisive activities, and at the federal level, DEI has been abolished, yet we still try to keep it in our comprehensive plan, and on the other hand, you tell me that the state level, these bathroom laws are laws that you can't do anything about. And yet, you ignore the federal-level laws that are being made, so what is it, yes or no? Maybe as a city council, you need to show us what is important to you by spending a little money to make changes that are both, makes it safe for both our LGBTQ and others, since that is the lens that chapter nine uses. Thank you.
Rosie Hall? Rosie Hall?
My name is Rosie Hall, and I represent myself and all the Christians that believe in Jesus. I am here to speak to you to remove the DEI agenda. We Christian people denounce for it. You are imposing on us your immoral beliefs. The majority of Christian families of this community want to live with the true and freedom that God gave us, but instead, you choose to follow the lies of Lucifer and his dark, deceiving agenda, to destroy and confuse even more the progressive anti-Christian people. You are using the DEI as your leverage to change and destroy everything that our founders' father worked for, because elitist people like you, that's why they wrote and left for us the Declaration of Independence. In the second, third, fourth, and sixth amendment of the Constitution, contain the prohibition against the government to prevent the same forms of tyranny. You hypocritical Laviatans, you talk so much about equality and inclusion for the DEI agenda. Where's the equality and inclusion for the Mexicans and Hispanic people and the Christian community and the Christian families of this community with good role models? You don't work for the DEI agenda, you work for us, the majority of common sense Christian people. You are contradicting yourself with your nonsense argument. You don't want to listening to the truth from a prospective point of view, because it's no music to your ears. I am not here to feel unsatisfied, the feelings of your human flesh. You are our servants, and you have to listen to us, the majority of Christian people. You are not above us, you never will be. No man is above Jesus Christ, neither to insult his intelligence. He is the only one that is above everything in the whole universe. Live in the freedom of God and never in the bondage of the Laviatans. We don't want to be the embarrassing of this nation.
Mike Wallace. Mike, yes, sorry.
Mike Wallace, representing myself, Ellensburg. So since we are talking about DEI again, I thought I'd share a couple of DEI stories that have happened to me or to a close family member of mine. So back in 2020, in that time when the insanity of DEI was kind of forced upon the American public, we were forced to endure, many of us in our jobs, struggle sessions and DEI kind of meetings, and in the course of those meetings, we were told regularly that just because we're white, we're automatically racist. This was to include us, I guess, and with all the other racists who were telling us that we were in fact racist. We were told that we weren't allowed to have a voice because we were white, and this was by a representative that was hired at the organization that I was at. This person also proceeded to say that because I'm a man, and God help me, I'm a white man, that's the worst kind. I'm not a, oh yeah, Christian white man, that's even the worst of the worst kind. I should just silently, and I should be a listener because of all the historic wrongs that were done to people, as if an immoral action in the present will undo an immoral action in the past. Absolute lunacy of DEI suggests that we can in the present commit horrendous acts of uncivil, unkind, un-American behavior, as if that's going to rectify mistakes that are made in the past. And just for the record, since we are in the greatest country that's ever existed, we abolished slavery in less than a hundred years. No other country in the history of the United States or the world has ever done that. We abolished it, yeah, didn't do it perfectly, yeah, there were some problems that kept going until we got rid of the Jim Crow laws. I get that, but in this country where freedom of speech is supposed to be sacrosanct, a person was told because of their skin color and their gender, well, I don't use gender because that's nonsense, their sex, because of that, that they don't have a right to speak. That's the end result of the lunacy of DEI. It always ends there. Another example is a close family member, this happened just recently, this person works in a different language. They took a long time to learn the language, they've worked in that language for fifteen, sixteen, twenty years, I don't even know, somewhere in that ballpark. And they were told that it would be better if they moved to an English-speaking situation, because they didn't represent the language, the way that the people who speak the language that she speaks look like. And as for the purpose of representation, that she should voluntarily step into an English-speaking position because she didn't look like the people who she was serving. That's DEI. It's unacceptable, it's wrong, we need to get rid of it.
Samantha Hall?
Good evening, my name is Samantha Hall, I've been a resident of Ellensburg for over ten years now. At the last meeting, I noticed several concerns I feel compelled to address. One of the key messages from the DEI Commission emphasizes the importance of mutual respect and support within our community. Yet I was alarmed to learn the names, phone numbers, and addresses of individuals who submitted suggestions were made publicly available. While I initially assumed only names would be shared out of respect for confidentiality, and I later discovered that additional personal information had also been disclosed. This act, commonly referred to as doxing, raises serious concerns about privacy and safety. I struggle to understand the purpose of such disclosure other than to potentially create diversion and tension among these with differing views. Additionally, I've observed that some council members appear dismissive towards speakers who express disagreement with the diversity, equity, equity, and inclusion DEI initiatives. There have been instances of lack of eye contact and visibly negative body language, which do not foster the respectful environment that the council advocates. Disagreement should not be met with simple gestures of contempt, but rather with openness and dialogue. My concern lies not within the concept of inclusion itself, but in the imbalance I perceive in its inflammation. While awareness is important, it must be accompanied by practical equitable action that benefits all members of the community regardless of background or identity. If our goal is to build a fair society, we should be striving to support everyone, not only those who are currently emphasized by the DEI efforts. To the council members, I ask you this, isn't the foundation of community rooted in shared values, mutual support, and a collective commitment to the well-being of every resident? We all deserve a sense of belonging, and we all have a role to play in creating a community that is truly... community that is truly inclusive, one that does not marginalize anyone regardless of where they stand. Thank you for your time.
Al Wood in not solar charging. Mr. Wood, I don't know if you've been in the meetings before, but introduce yourself, city or county resident or other, and whether you're speaking for yourself or somebody else, and then we'll start your three minutes.
My name is Al Wood. I recently purchased a house here in the city of Ellensburg up near Sanders Mill, and would like to address a couple of issues on solar charging. So I'd like to ask that you consider changing the trued-up credit from annually, which happens now in April, to either monthly or quarterly. This would give more often help for low-income and fixed income. It would also solve the current issue that when you purchase a house with solar panels currently in mid-year, there is no process within Ellensburg Utilities to credit that trued-up solar credit to the new owner or back to the old owner. They did credit me for the time between May and February. Also, I'd like to ask about the trued-up credit money. You guys currently in Ellensburg pay 0.36 a cent for a kilowatt-hour of stored, and other places like Yakima have .04, and some places in the state pay .08. Not a big distinction, but you are a little bit low on that. I think it would help to offset the cost of installing solar, which in my case costs about $30,000 to put on the roof of the house. And as you grow in Ellensburg, you will need a lot more electricity and incentives for people to put solar on the roof is probably a good thing.
Sandy Elliott, and this is a conversation about budget, no relation.
1114 East Seattle Avenue. I'm here to caution you that you're going to need to set some priorities for this city that, and you've heard several reasons why, there's going to be some major opposition to any attempt that you make to pass a bond in order to build a swimming pool or recreation center. There's going to be a major pushback if you don't set some priorities that are based on our needs in this community and not the comprehensive plan, which is where DEI comes from. It's the originating document that told us we were going to have to plan for those populations that are not represented at this time. And I was part of the discussion in 1990 when they passed the comprehensive plan at the state level. Just a suggestion. And some food for thought for our new candidates that are coming in for the city. Good luck, and I hope you can make a difference because you're going to bring a lot of this discussion out forward and front and center for this community, which doesn't have a lot of opportunities to share the information.
Ms. Elliott, if you can address your comments to us, please.
Mr. Elliott. I came home to write a $5,700 check for a half a year of real estate taxes, and I wondered where these were going. And then I paid a $350 water bill, and I was wondering what on earth with seven crooks running through a city? Why are we paying that kind of money for our water? I'm wondering who is advising you on where your money is being spent in this budget? And I look to the, again, the comprehensive plan, which is what started the DEI, and what monies are being spent by you, of our tax dollars, to support a ship that's already sailed. That discussion is over, and you can tell that by the election that we just had. People are not interested in paying for it. We want our families secure. Finances are the number-one problem of families these days. I want you to pay attention, because probably is your problem too, putting food on the table and maybe getting a good education for your kids in a private school. Anyway, that's my advice, and good luck to the new candidates.
Candice Comfort, Chapter Nine, DEI.
My name is Candice Comfort. I'm representing myself, and I live in Kittitas County. I'm here tonight to talk about the city's negligence to our community by adding Chapter Nine, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, to Ellensburg's comprehensive plan. When Chapter Nine was added to the city's comprehensive plan in 2021, I believe it was added with good intentions. However, there was shortsightedness, and because of that, the chapter will never succeed in its mission. As stated in the chapter, diversity is a fact, equity is a choice, and inclusion is an action. We can look around the room and see people in here with diverse beliefs and opinions. There is no denying that. Chapter Nine states that it is important to embrace the range of human differences within our community to help build a strong foundation of understanding. But has it? I see a crumbling foundation because the city has put into effect a chapter that it has zero control over, which has brought to the spotlight our differences instead of our shared commonalities. It is an utter failure of the city as they cannot control people's beliefs. Next, equity is a choice. This was on full display at the last city council meeting. The comprehensive plan states that equity alleviates barriers to ensure everyone has access to the same opportunities. But council went against this very statement on May 5th, when they didn't allow more time for a Spanish speaker who needed an interpreter to make his public comment. It was well within the city council's power to allot him more time, but it wasn't given. Instead, it was others in the audience who tried to rectify the grievance by giving him their time, to which council still said, no. There was zero equity shown by the very people who had the power to bestow it, thus proving that it is not a DEI chapter that makes a difference, but the character of the community's people. Finally, inclusion is a choice. Chapter Nine states inclusion is when all residents experience a sense of belonging and know they are both welcome in our community and encouraged to participate. It's not the job of the government to make people feel they belong. It's the job of entities outside of the government, such as churches, clubs, sports teams, et cetera. The government is responsible for the operational side of city affairs, but not inclusion. Inclusion cannot be forced, rather fostered, through genuine relationships that come about organically. Instead of trying to enforce something the city never had control over in the first place, eliminate Chapter Nine and let us focus on the things we have in common. Let us unify naturally over our similarities instead of highlighting our differences. It's better for the city, better for our community, and you can help this happen. Thank you.
Joylyn Schneider, DEI in pool.
Hi, I'm Joylyn Schneider. I live in the county. I'm barely outside of city limits, but county. I'm here actually to ask some questions about the city pool. My kids, I have four kids on the Ellensburg area swim team, and we will be moving from the central pool to the city pool. So I would like to know what protections are in place to vet whether individuals are taking advantage of the law that allows them to use the locker rooms that do not align with their biological genders? What protections? Because the law does not protect fakers. It does not protect pretenders. It doesn't allow any protections for those people who would take advantage of the law. So what protections do you have in place to actually protect my kids in those situations? Are there any protections currently in place to vet whether individuals who want to use locker rooms that don't align with their biological gender? Are my kids protected? Because what I see at the city pool is a law pasted on the locker room doors that says you can go in with whatever you identify with today. And we know gender right now is very, very fluid. So somebody could claim to be a gender one day, and then a different gender the next day, or a gender, like no gender, another day. This exists. So how much tolerance do we have for uber-fluid people who change day to day? Are there protections in that situation? Bad laws exist, and it is your job at this grassroots level, at the lowest level, to protect us from bad laws. You claim you can't do anything, and that's just not the truth. It's what you'll enforce and what protections you put in place for us. And I should probably take this to the sheriff's department as well to see what they will enforce. But I'm starting with you guys. If you don't have any measures in place, I would at least like to ask that equal consideration be given to the indecent exposure law, and that can be posted with the other law on the locker room doors at the city pool. The indecent exposure law, it's pretty short. A person is guilty of indecent exposure if he or she intentionally makes any open and obscene exposure of his or her person or the person of another, knowing that such conduct is likely to cause reasonable affront or alarm. It's short. I think it's appropriate to post. At this point, it looks like there's favoritism to the transgender law or the LGBTQ.
Ms. Schneider.
Law. I am out of time. Thank you.
And Unity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat Kelleherd, I live in the county. I'm sorry, I don't have a hat today. 3.9 million. Everybody should have got a hat. I'm here to speak on Unity Park. Two years ago, I turned in some comments to you about this issue. I commented on the sightlines going to the alley from Unity Park. They're needed with the removal of the bushes and the opening up of the alley. Waste management now becomes a sponsor at Unity Park. And you can see it, I saw it at two large gatherings where people, you know, depending on how they laid out their viewing the grandstand, there's those green dumpsters all the way up the alley. That's easily corrected by putting up a black chain link fence and putting in privacy slots. The second issue is the grass that's in the middle is not a good effective service for that park. I've observed two large gatherings, people are enjoying that area. And what's happening, if you have someone up on the stage, the grandparents and the parents are watching the kids sing, and they're coming forward and standing, and maybe there's someone on the grass, but maybe they're not. But if there was someone on the grass, sitting on the grass, they have no sightline. Their sightline is blocked. What needs to be done for older people, you know, when they go to an event, is have a chair for them. If the surface was changed, and I recommend that the grass be replaced with the historic brick pavers, then you could set up chairs in have-a-effect. The gorge has hard surface and grass. The grass is up on the hill. They have a sightline. The premium seats are on a hard surface with chairs. So to get most enjoyment out of the park, I recommend replacing the grass with the historic pavers. Also, you have spalling on your cement. The water feature is not working, but there are certain areas where it's spalling, and I think you could chip that out immediately and replace it with historic pavers. Although it would be patchwork, I think it'd look really good. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, we will move to item eight.
Anyone online? Oh, sorry. Line up.
Courtney Garzone, Ellensburg City resident. DEI is important. It makes communities stronger. It's what makes these conversations possible today. There's a diversity of opinion and inclusion of voices in this room right now. Diversity embraces the perspectives, ideas, and values of folks with different lived experiences. We talk about biodiversity as a strength because having a mixture of organisms makes environments stronger. There's no difference when discussing diversity of people and of thoughts. Equity is making a level playing field so that everyone has access to the same essential needs. Inclusion is ensuring that the perspectives represented in decision-making and in the community in general involve people with different lived experiences and values, and that the individuals bringing those ideas to the table feel seen and heard and respected. To reduce DEI to the vile transphobic rhetoric and assumptions that have been used in these meetings is a disservice to us all. To our community members who have asked for the DEI Commission to be disbanded, are you attacking DEI because you've convinced yourself that racism and discrimination don't exist anymore, or have you just convinced yourself that it's okay? White supremacist groups exist and have made themselves visible in Ellensburg. I have a flyer that was a veterans' event that someone put a white genocide for interracial marriages sticker on, and it's pretty horrifying. I found it on Fifth Ave and Pearl Street, that corkboard right there. We've heard vulgar and hateful racist language in these city council hearings, and you've changed your Zoom-in policies because of it. And white supremacist stick, I already talked about that. Are you going to succumb to the hateful wishes of these individuals? I'm grateful that I've lived a well-rounded life, and I've learned lessons that kept me from being a bigoted individual who use hate and fear-mongering to make the lives of marginalized folks more difficult. If you seek to win the approval of bigots and racists instead of protecting the lives and futures of queer, trans, Latinx, BIPOC, AAPI, and other marginalized individuals, don't expect those of us who have love in our hearts and compassion for our community to sit idly by and let it happen. Thank you.
You can give it to the clerk if you'd like. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Item eight, business requiring public hearings. There is none. We'll go to item nine A, which is page 28. This is potential second reading and adoption of ordinance 4960.
Stacy Henderson, Planning Manager for the city of Ellensburg. I am here to propose the second reading for the Silver Star Rezone Application P24120, submitted by Jim Ritter, the property owner. As a brief reminder, the applicant seeks a site-specific rezone of the two parcels located east of Reeser Creek Road at the address 1350 Reeser Creek Road, as you can see on the map right there. The proposal is to rezone from residential suburban to commercial neighborhood for purposes of providing a transitional zone between existing commercial highway and residential suburban zoning, as well as to expand development opportunities for his parcels. The comprehensive plan, future land use designation for the subject parcels are blended residential neighborhood for which the proposed commercial neighborhood zoning is a compatible option. Staff held an open record hearing on April 14, 2025, and received the hearing examiner's corrected, recommended approval on April 28, 2025. The first reading of ordinance 4960 occurred at the closed record hearing before council on May 5, 2025, at which time council voted to approve the rezone as presented and conducted the first reading of the ordinance. Staff now recommends council move to conduct the second reading of the ordinance 4960 approving rezone of parcel numbers 963051 and 716133 from residential suburban to commercial neighborhood. Thank you.
Council, questions of staff? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? Anybody online? Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to a second reading and adoption of ordinance 4960.
Mr. Mayor, I move to conduct a second reading and adoption of ordinance 4960 approving rezone of parcel numbers 963051 and 716133 from residential suburban RS to commercial neighborhood CN zoning. Second.
We have a motion second to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4960, which approves the rezone for the listed parcel numbers and rezones them from residential suburban to commercial neighborhood. Is there any discussion amongst counsel?
Just thank you for all the work from staff to put this before us.
Thank you.
And the applicant?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Beauchamp?
Yes.
Goodlow?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to zoning and amending Title 15 of the Ellensburg City Code by changing the zoning classification of certain property within the city of Ellensburg from residential suburban RS to commercial neighborhood CN.
Thank you. Item nine B, page 40. This is ordinance 4961, which is second reading and potential adoption. Again, this is a rezone, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Mark Rudd, associate planner with community development. I recognize I did not introduce myself at the last hearing. I know some of you, but not all of you, so happy to correct that now. But this would be the second reading for ordinance 4961, city file number P25006. As you'll recall, this is for the property that is at the southeast corner of North Kititas and West Fourth, previously used for the Fitterer's furniture storage. It's currently vacant, and the proposal would be to rezone from heavy industrial IH to central commercial. The purpose of this is to allow the applicant, on behalf of the property owner, to reestablish a new use in there for commercial recreational purposes for an indoor climbing center. The future land use map designation for this is urban center. The CC zoning is in conformance with the urban center designation, and the proposed use is allowed in the CC zoning district. Hearing examiner held an open record public hearing on April 14th. After that, they forwarded to the city a recommendation of approval to this council, who held a closed record hearing on May 5th and had the first reading of ordinance 4961. And so with that, staff would recommend that the council move to approve, move to conduct second reading of ordinance 4961 for this proposal. And I'm happy to address any questions for the matter if you have.
Counsel, questions of staff? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Online? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to conduct second reading and approval of ordinance 4961, rezone of parcel number 573833 from heavy industrial IH to central commercial CC.
Second.
We have a motion second to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4961, which rezones parcel 573833 to central commercial. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Beauchamp?
Yes.
Goodlow?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to zoning and amending Title 15 of the Ellensburg City Code by changing the zoning classification of certain property within the city of Ellensburg from heavy industrial IH to central commercial CC.
Thank you. Item nine C, page 51. This is ordinance 4962. This would potentially be first reading. Expansion of low-income utility discount program to include 40% AMI. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, Buddy Standich, Energy Services Director. Before you tonight is first reading of ordinance 4962 to expand the low-income discount program to 40% AMI. During the 2019-2020 budget adoption, council directed staff to look at amending the previous low-income discount program. Some of those guiding principles that were adopted during that process were to simplify the program, make it more standard and user-friendly for our customers and our staff, and then in the change, make sure not to leave any participant behind. What we've been made aware of is that in the change to standardize it, the threshold was set at 125% of the federal poverty level, excuse me, and it removed the previous 40% AMI. Those income levels are different at different household levels. And so what this would do would just be to standardize it back and make sure that no customer was impacted that was on the program and open it up to anybody that either met the 125% limit or 40% AMI. So it's just a way to clean up some overlap that we have been made aware of.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Buddy, this goes back to something that we asked when we were on UAC. Approximately, how many residents is this impacting right now?
This change would impact 36.
Thirty-six out of, how many are on the total, on the program currently?
I think it's close to 200.
So a pretty significant portion of population that is on that, that would be impacted by this, hence why they brought it up as a recommendation. So just want to fill that in for folks.
Any further questions of staff? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue? Go ahead and approach, and same rules, except, yeah, still three minutes.
Sandy LA at number 14, Seattle Avenue. Yes, this is again one of those issues that is impacting our single families. We're picking up the tab for the people who are not paying their bills. We don't have control over what their use is, and if the city isn't policing it carefully, how do we know that they are in fact being taken off the role, the dole, as it were, when they've reached that poverty level? They've managed to increase their income. I'd like to hear specifically answers to those two questions. The policing, and how many people, and how much are our bills impacted by these people that we'll be picking up the tab for?
I will route that back through staff when we're done.
Courtney Garzone, city of Ellensburg. Yeah, absolutely, we should include people who are 40% AMI, and I'm happy to cover the bill for them because they clearly don't have the means to do it at 40% AMI. You're making very little money. It's difficult to pay your bills, as we all have understood. It is expensive. Families need support, and I'm absolutely happy to do that because I'm able to, and that is what community is. We show up for each other. I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Staff, Buddy, can you come back up? So the question's directed to counsel. We're quantifying the impact, and I'm assuming this is all subsidized low-energy programs for the speaker? I'm getting a nod. I don't know how easy that is to pull back. I don't think that's going to hold up first reading, but if that's something that can be looked at. And then the other one was, what are the mechanisms in place to adjust when people are no longer, no longer qualify? Is that something that is reasonable to come back at the June 2nd meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Okay, let's look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to conduct the first reading of ordinance 4962, extending the low-income discount program eligibility threshold to those at or below 40% AMI.
Second.
So we have a motion in second to conduct first reading of ordinance 4962, which is, extends low-income discount thresholds for city utilities. Counsel, any discussion on the matter?
This is more just a comment to the citizen concern as far as this. I can understand perception that this is Seattle. This is not Seattle. Majority of our residents here that have that poverty threshold are actually our seniors, usually on social security or some sort of reduced income status. And so this is helping them out. This is a really important thing for those that are a sensitive age, that don't have a lot of income, disposable income for this. This is something that is helping out our citizens. And I can understand the concern, and I respect the fact that we should look at mechanisms to ensure that people are not abusing these systems. But for a vulnerable population, I think this is a pretty important thing. So just a comment.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye to, or vote aye opposed? That motion passes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to Title IX Utilities and amending section 9.30.20 of chapter 9.30 Utility Rates of the Ellensburg City Code.
Item 10A, page 56. This is a continuation of discussion regarding renewing transit and transportation system funding by ballot measure in 2025, and this is a public comment opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Heidi Behrensurnaway, city manager. This is an item you have requested to bring back at your April 7th meeting. Council actually voted to bring an item to the voters and ask staff to prepare the resolution to actually renew the two-tenths of what we call a transportation benefit district, which currently funds our transit system, and then also to increase that amount by one-tenth of a percent for our street maintenance program. And the request was to bring it back based on some additional considerations and for a discussion. So I have prepared for you, and trying to frame this a little bit differently so you can look at these issues separately, and to help folks in the audience understand what we're talking about as well. So again, we're talking about two separate issues, and I'm going to start out with our, the budget and our transportation funding issue. And as you all recall, when we were balancing our biennial budget moving into 2025 and 2026, what we saw over the last few years was pretty significant inflationary pressure. And our general fund, which are our general government services, things that we don't generally collect fees for, our water systems and our sewer systems, those are enterprises that have to support themselves. These are those general government services, like our streets or like our library system, our parks facilities, things like that. What we saw is a significant increase in both labor costs and every single project cost. It costs more to maintain the services and the facilities that we have, and the revenues that we have to match those for our general government are primarily funded by taxes. And so if we look at those general government services and our general fund, a lot of cities focus, these are, again, those primarily tax-supported services, and the taxes that support those services in Ellensburg, about 50% is our sales tax, and that tends to be elastic and dependent on the economy. Our property tax, which is about a quarter of that pie, also is very restricted. It's, we're limited to a 1% increase in that amount per year plus new construction. And so when you're seeing 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10% inflation over a year, that quickly gets eaten up and then some. And our BNO taxes, business and occupation taxes, those are utility taxes, those tend to be fairly flat, although steady as well. So these are the primary funding sources for our general government funds. And what happens over time is, we've talked a little bit about the structural deficit, and I'll explain this here. The yellow line is essentially our sources, our revenues. The gray line, which you see, is our expenditures. And what happens over time when those expenditures crease, increase faster than our revenues, what you see essentially is, we call this the structural deficit. When we can only raise these by limited amounts, we have to use essentially our savings. So this is our fund balance. And what happens when you keep dipping into savings, it goes down. And so as we were looking at, at the beginning of our budget process in 2024, this is what we saw. We saw that our revenues were not meeting our expenditures, and we often budget in one-time funds to help, and we try to manage against that and adjust our services over time. This particular budget was very difficult. One of the trends that we've seen over the last few years is an increasing amount of our sales tax specifically that goes to support our street maintenance program and our arterial street program, which is our construction program. Our staff are amazing at bringing in grant revenues to support the work that we do, but we also use sales tax to help support and use those matches. And for instance, Water Street, our project that we have, we're bringing in $3 million, and we are using a sales tax funds to help with that match. So over time, what's happened is this, this service has increased the pressure on those other general government services, and this has been pretty steady over time. So that's when we talk about the transportation challenges. Funding our street maintenance program is pretty, is a very expensive process, and what happens is when we don't maintain our infrastructure, it costs more to replace it down the road. So deferring maintenance, the general rule, and I know that we have a capital project manager amongst us, it's generally not a good idea to do it because it costs more in the long run. And so if you're maintaining your streets, for instance, your chip seal and crack seal, that is much less expensive to do than it is to rebuild a street. In your packet, what we tried to do is provide all the background. We have a handout on our streets and our street funding and our street maintenance program. We also have a handout on our transit system. So one, now I want to switch over to talking about transit, because what happens with cities generally is when you find out you have pressure, and we don't have all the, we don't have every tool in the toolbox, we have some limited tools when it comes to funding certain services. Typically, what cities would do if they had, if they were trying to take the pressure off the general fund, they would ask the voters, for instance, for what's called the transportation benefit district. In this community, in 2016, when we went to look at funding for our transit services, that was the mechanism that we used to fund transit. And so the voters in 2016 voted in two-tenths of a percent to fund transit, and the transportation benefit district has a 10-year limit, so that is going to expire on October 1st, 2026. So that's the other issue that we have going. We have, we have transportation system funding that's causing pressure on our general fund, and then we have an expiring transit sales tax that we need to address as well. And what's happened over time, we've been really good about getting, about getting grant funding also to operate. This is our transit fund, and the blue is, are the dollars that we pull in to help operate. And over time, because we've been so good at this, our fund balance has been rising. We've also been very conservative about spending that fund balance, and so right now we have been working on what our long-term needs for that service as well. So when we came to balancing the budget for 2025 and 26, we had to make some pretty significant changes. We use just about every tool in the toolbox. One of those is to use one-time funding, and one-time funding goes away. It's not something you ever want to maintain services on. And so we had some of our ARPA funds or the state and local fiscal recovery funds that we actually repurposed to our general fund. We made a number of service adjustments, including in our transportation or in our street preservation program, we cut that by half for the year of 2025 in order to reduce our expenditures in that area, because that's where we were seeing consistently rising costs. We changed our health insurance pool, we made a number of changes, and one of the recommendations we made at that time, we knew that we needed to revoke that transportation benefit district, so I'm using TBD, but also there was a discussion about, can we expand that to use it for transit and transportation, which is typically what cities do, using that for transportation. So we worked pretty closely with the Public Transit Advisory Committee, looking through options, and just a little background on what a transportation benefit district. Again, cities can only authorize revenues past taxes that the state provides the opportunity or the option for cities to actually do. So the revised code of Washington offers options and actually is the code that governs transportation benefit districts. State law allows up to three-tenths of a percent. The first tenth can be councilmatic. That means a council or a county commission can actually vote that in without the vote of the community. And then there is a license fee option for that as well. And again, back in 2016, the voters in Ellensburg approved the transportation benefit district and voted two-tenths of a sales and use tax, and that does expire in, on September 30th of 2026. Since that time, and since we had discussions with PTAC, we also, one of the challenges of using that two-tenths of a percent without increasing the amount is that the state legislature in- the state legislature in the funding bills for transit this year put some additional language, ensuring that transit agencies couldn't supplant any of the resources. And so if we were thinking about using our our transit dollars for something other than transit, we wouldn't be eligible for for those grants anymore. So that really created a limit to the ability to share those resources. And we also learned that there are other potential competing ballots which might adjust timing of what an item that council would bring to to the voters. And then our economy, we know that there's a lot of uncertainty in what's happening in our economy and looking at if we raise the sales tax at this time, it might not be a great time. So but that's a really a decision up to you all. So sale, there are two mechanisms, and the the PTAC group looked at both of these mechanisms. And the first we've been talking about is a transportation benefit district. Again, it's RCW thirty-six seventy-three, and currently we have two-tenths of a percent. It does expire, there's always a ten-year sunset on the that on the transportation benefit district, the sales tax. There's also an option in state law that allows cities to enact a transit sales tax, and this is something that doesn't expire. It's used by a number of just a handful of other cities, but it's also used by what in state law called public transit benefit areas, which is something bigger than a city. It might be a portion of a county or an urban growth area. A lot of communities create a geographical area, and that is their public transportation benefit district, and they use the transit sales tax to fund that area beyond the city limits. And so those are the two primary mechanisms that are used to support transfer, excuse me, transit. One of the issues we we've also learned is that the Department of Revenue has limits of when they start and stop revenues. So we know that our sales tax for our trans for transit, so under our transportation benefit district, ends on September thirtieth. The Department of Revenue does not start and stop revenue collection on October first anymore. The only times they start are January first, April first, and July first. And so the timing of any voted measure would be impacted by the ability to start and stop a measure. So as PTAC was looking, and again, the PTAC is Public Transit Advisory Committee, was looking at options, they looked at five options, and when council originally voted at your April seventh meeting, you chose option two. And I know there's been some additional discussion about based on the uncertainty in the economy, do we want to rethink that? Does council want to rethink that option? And we know that we have the two-tenths and and potentially using the transit sales tax option that doesn't expire instead of, and separating the issue of the street maintenance and also the transit funding into two. So tonight, what we're looking for you for for council from you is really direction on do you want to, what would you like to consider for a future ballot measure? It could be the same as you chose before or could be different, and looking for a direction on which RCW or mechanism you'd like to to consider, and what the timing of that and the amount. And what would happen is if you chose to move something to the ballot, we would come back to you with a resolution that would reflect your interests of your discussion tonight.
So council, questions of staff? I have one if nobody else does.
I got one, but I'm gonna let you go first.
So what's, so we know the August ballot is Hospital District One and Fire District Seven. Fire District Seven's irrelevant because they don't they don't they don't cross over our boundaries. Hospital District One has a fairly significant property tax issue. What's on November?
I do not know of any other ballot measure in in Ellensburg at this time.
Okay, and then the first election is February and twenty-six?
February and April.
What's the latest date we can do something and still hit, still cover the revenue when it expires?
April.
So in April or February and April, we don't know of any issues right now?
That's correct.
On the ballot, okay.
This comes back to more of the breakdown on on this, and forgive me, I'm still making sure that I have a full grasp of this. From what we asked to put on a ballot, we were going to leave it up for voters for the two-tenths plus the one percent dedicated for street maintenance, correct? And so now you're looking for a recommendation that either is the same as that or possibly altered it or go with these other different options based upon, I guess, councils?
That's my request. I asked to put it back on.
Understand, okay, got you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience?
Hi, my name's Carrie Vickers. I live in County, and Ellensburg is my city, too. I would just like to take a look at the model of Link Transit in Wenatchee. I believe Link may have started out as something that was a free service, but it is not anymore. Link pays for itself, and it has built itself a beautiful depot by charging a small fee for people to use the service. I feel like last week, David Palmer said that we budget conservatively. If we budget conservatively, maybe instead of charging all of our citizens that don't use the transit to run a transit system and fix the roads, maybe instead of increasing our taxes, we could actually have a small fee for people to have an annual pass, six-month pass, three-month pass, and even consider utilizing a place like Hope Source to help the people that are less fortunate or financially depressed, to have some kind of a support system where they can maybe not have to pay the same fees. I just think it'd be worth looking at. I know that there's a timeline for having all of this come together, but it's something that I think, I mean, I think that Heidi has done a great job on presenting how much is needed to make this work, and the the quarters and the percentages that she showed of where everything comes from. But I really believe that we could actually save this whole percentages, and we have to do this, but we can't do this, all the stipulations that come with it. If we actually just had a link transit-type system where our people that are using the transit are actually paying instead of, how many people in the room? Can I see a show of hands? Who has used the bus in this room? Four people. Four people in this room have used that bus system. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Courtney Garzone, Ellensburg City. The reason that folks use that bus system is because they don't have cars, because they can't afford cars or the insurance or the gas that it takes to keep them moving. It is incredibly expensive to have a car. That is something that always depreciates in value. There is no such thing as investing in a car because it's always going to need more work. So having free transit is a really important thing that makes Ellensburg unique, and it's what gives people access to getting around the city with a lot more ease. Hope Source does not have capacity to individually transport everyone to everywhere they need to go, and so this system being free and accessible to all is really important. I hope that you consider keeping it that way. Again, community is a collaborative effort. We protect each other, we keep each other safe. These are the reasons that taxes, they help us have roads, they help us have buses, they help us get to where we need to go, and that's what we're all here for, is to protect each other and to keep each other safe in any way that we can. Thanks.
Mike Wallace, represent myself, Ellensburg. To the point, generally speaking, people who use a thing should pay for a thing. I use electricity, I might pay for electricity. I drive my car, and I use gas, and I have to pay for that. I'm more conscious and aware of my costs when I'm got some skin in the game. It's interesting that municipalities will oftentimes see as a step of progress, a publicly-funded transit system, but it's usually a sign of failure, not progress. It's it's because we aren't doing something that we are doing something for someone else. I'm all for charity, advocate for it, I give regularly. Perhaps there's some other options if if the if the insistence is that it remain free as a free service, perhaps there's some other more, we like the word equity, equitable solutions to how to fund that. Perhaps an endowment for those citizens of our community who are so much in love with the transit system that they must have it, even though they might never use it, provide an endowment that they could donate towards that would fund the system. I think that one of the reasons why public systems are free is because if they weren't, no one would use them. Instead of four people in the room, we'd probably have one or zero people in the room. That's just a reality. Look at the Seattle Light Rail system, multiple millions of dollars for for how much they've and it's basically empty most of the time. I don't know how well-used our system is. I mean, it's nice to do nice things for people, sure, but instead of putting that on the backs of people who are already paying high taxes, our property taxes go up every year with no improvements to our property, and they go to fund things like this. Our our sales tax, if it goes up, we we are funding something we're not using. So can we not come up with a more equitable solution rather than taxing people, require people to get some skin in the game? If you want to use the service, pay for it. Maybe not for the full amount, maybe it can still be subsidized. But if you're if you're subsidizing the entire thing, then people don't have any skin in the game, and they will essentially, it just just like it's any form of government, people always vote themselves a raise. Look at Congress, my gosh, right? They will always vote themselves a raise. So of course, the people who want to use it are saying, no, I don't want to pay for it, but we don't do that in other areas of our society. You pay for your groceries, you pay for your gas, you should pay for the bus, simple as that. Thanks.
I'm Raleigh Robertson. I live here in the County, and I'm representing myself. I have two statements and a possible solution for the city. One, I was looking at your pie chart, which I appreciate, and I saw that forty-eight percent was from sales tax. And as inflation goes up, clearly, we all feel it, so should sales tack tax if I have to pay more for groceries, then there should there's more taxes there. Therefore, the sales tax should reflect, to a degree, some sort of inflation. It shouldn't stay flat as inflation goes up. And my second point is, I would like to agree, vehicles are expensive, they are not an investment whatsoever. I have several of them. But I do want to recommend the solution of budgeting, and I understand you talking about the budget, which is great, but a budget doesn't work if we're losing money. I personally budget. It is a failure if you spend more than you make. So there's two ways that we can do this. We can increase revenue, which means taxing me more, which hurts a lot. I'm twenty years old, I've got a wife, a kid coming, I work my butt off. The second way is by cutting expenses. I would recommend that we look at ways we can cut expenses rather than taxing me more, because as a twenty-year-old who owns my own vehicles, because I work hard, I would ask that you would represent me as well. I don't use the transit, I understand people need to, but I also want to recommend that you work hard, you work one job, you work two jobs, you work three jobs for your own vehicle as soon as you can. Make a budget for the city and for yourselves, and stick to it. Thank you.
Joylyn Schneider, County, representing myself. I can speak a little bit to the link bus. My dad was county commissioner at the time that that was set up, and it was free initially, and it's a much better system now that they pay a little bit for it. I can also attest, my sister was Down Syndrome, she received a free pass to ride the bus, and she could get around to her job and everywhere else, and I'm not sure exactly what funded her free pass. I think Link itself did, it was a Link pass. But I know that like the Central Washington Disabilities Association here, I'm a caregiver for some some mentally and physically disabled kids here, so they provide a lot of resources for people in need, at least a certain community. So that's something to consider as well, maybe. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm actually introduce this because I I asked for this to be put back on our desk to discuss. I felt that the action that we took on April seventh, you know, potentially sort of violates the principle that it's two issues in one on one ballot measure, and that hasn't worked very well in Washington court system. So maybe it would get past it, maybe it wouldn't get past it, but I think that we need to be giving people the choice to pay for specific things. And so at the very least, I want to see if we're going to renew the tax. It can be in its existing form, although that's really not the intended use for the the tax. And as an additional level of or just some additional information for the public, the first time we did this, we put the funding measure in the other column, in the transit one, the permanent one, and it failed. They went back out with a advertising campaign, and they passed it with a fairly significant majority for the point-two percent off the ten-year tax. But again, it's sort of, we're sort of out of sync with most communities. We're using a a pathway to pay for a service that's a little bit different. It was voter-approved, and you know, make sure everybody here understands, none of this is that we're talking about right right now has anything to do with council imposing a tax on you, it's whether we put it, it's what we put on the ballot for people to vote. So I just want to make that distinction, because I think that there's a little bit of of gray area there. I personally would like to see the point-two put into the right column and let people vote it up or down, and then we need to deal with our street funding in a separate measure. And I think I would like to see the two separated. If this is the pathway we choose to begin to take care of our aging infrastructure, which is getting expensive very quickly and is a necessary function of city government, I want to see it funded, but I don't want to see it funded combined with another tax. I want them separated out and let the voters choose.
Understand. Rich, are you, just so I understand, do we discuss this now or does someone have to make a motion? Do you have a motion? Or do we have, do we discuss before the motion?
So again, this is this is sort of stylistic. I have not made motions, I don't second motions, I run the process. So if council's supportive of a different approach, I would entertain that, and I I would support it, but I I typically stay out of that process.
For the sake of ensuring that we follow rules of decorum here, I'm going to make the motion that we, let me think about this properly, that we look at putting the two-tenths for transit in a separate bucket from the one-tenth for street maintenance.
I think just one thing.
Just one thing?
That's what the mayor was suggesting. So the first part of your statement is the one thing, I believe.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to make the motion to make the two-tenths its own separate mechan, uh, separate subject for putting out.
Transit sales tax.
Transit sales tax, thank you. Forgive me all, I'm trying to make sure I get this right.
Okay, well, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second, and if I if I could explain what the impact of this is, we are going to change what our direction was to both city staff and feedback to the PTAC, that we are going to disregard the original vote and the original direction, and we are going to provide them direction that we want to see a two-tenths initiative placed on a ballot under the transit sales tax?
Yeah.
Yes.
For the purposes of the Ellensburg trans transit system, not
Right.
transportation infrastructure.
Right.
So we are talking about buses and bus stops and ramps. We're not talking about streets and sidewalks.
Yep.
Could I make a comment related to that, just for clarification? So as the Chair of PTAC, I just want to make it clear that the PTAC recommendation, the original recommendation, which was the two-tenths of one percent, maintaining the current two-tenths of one percent that is set aside for transit that voters approved in two thousand and sixteen, and the additional one-tenth for street maintenance, because the case was made that the city needed additional revenue. That was the only reason that PTAC supported that option. PTAC's preference was to go strictly for transit, and I think in conversations I've had with PTAC as recently as last week, there's no opposition to going for the maintaining the two-tenths of one percent that the voters approved in two thousand and sixteen. So I just want to make it clear that PTAC wasn't really So I just want to make it clear that PTAC wasn't really pushing hard for the three-tenths. It was because the city said, "We need more money." And that was, it wasn't PTAC's area of expertise, but they felt like, one thing was consistent in uniform, was that all the PTAC members agreed that we need to maintain our streets. There's no disagreement at that level. So just want to say that.
So, go ahead. No, go ahead. So just going on to the comments here. So Rich, appreciate you bringing it up. From that original motion, I see what you're saying, David, but part of it was also ensuring a little bit of flexibility with those funds on the two-tenths for the need, if we have more deteriorating streets than was originally planned. And this is the construction guy, so I'm always going to be in favor of infrastructure and ensuring that we get that taken care of, because quite frankly, if our streets are crappy, no buses running on it, and none of your cars are running, and nobody's bicycles running on it, it becomes pothole city, and we can't have that. I appreciate you bringing this up, because I think it does hit the intention of what we're trying to do. We are trying to put this in the hands of you, the voters, to a lot of the comments that were here, as far as whether or not, or how we should be funding how much of the transit that we currently have. But I think we're all uniform in agreement as far as the importance of our street maintenance. So I think this works out pretty nicely for us. Just a comment, and this is where I'll ask PTAC to continue to maybe come back and provide some education if we do the two-tenths on a ballot, reminding people that currently funding for transit to transportation is partially grant-funded. With anticipation that those grant fundings go away, it would significantly deteriorate the current operations as it stands. So the intention of bringing this up for ballot so it can be funded is so that we are planning and prepared for if those grants go away, that some continuity of the operations could be maintained. And to the comments and questions as far as ridership, I see that people raise their hand, there's only four people here. There was over 116,000 people, riders rode in 2024. So it's not that no one's using it. A lot of people are using it. And again, it goes back to the vulnerable population. Now, there are a lot of great ideas as far as, maybe there's a shared cost, but to say that nobody's using it is a misnomer. Just like if somebody, we went to a different group, and we were asking if you were using a pool, there might be a population that says, "I'm not using a pool, shut it down." But it's not representative of everybody in the community. We have to remember that all these ideas are being utilized by someone. And so just kind of think about that in that perspective, so.
So I just want to point out, so what's on the table deals with the transit side.
Yes.
And it redirects it into a different sort of silo.
Yeah.
We're not talking about anything with streets unless we follow up the conversation with a conversation about streets. I just want to make sure everybody understands, you know, this is transit money, and it's potentially a permanent tax or as permanent as it may be.
So this, just for clarification, I was going to ask this. It's no longer a, in 10 years, citizens get to decide, it's a permanent tax.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the column in which transit systems are largely funded in Washington State. And so again, I look at that from the perspective, and I'm not debating that, you know, the merits of that one way or the other. I actually believe all government programs should have a sunset clause on them or a renewal. However, if we put this on the ballot and it gets approval, it gets approval under those conditions. If it doesn't get approval, then we have another issue to solve. But it's a public vote, and everybody will know what they're voting on.
Okay. Has there been, and maybe this is for Heidi, any meaningful examination about a shared cost model where riders have to pay a portion of it? And I ask because, yes, there's 117,000 rides over the, basically $2.3 million, but if you're talking about one individual commuting to work in that 260 days a year, we're subsidizing that taxpayers to the cost of $10,124 for a single rider. You can start handing out $5,000 cars and cut the costs in half. It's $19.47 a ride, or $843 a month for a single rider. So I don't think it's unfair to ask if you're going to use it, that there's skin in the game. So back to my question, have, has that even been examined thoroughly?
Very. Okay, if I answer that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no idea.
All right. So when the transit system started up, they actually did have a fare. And there's a pretty high administrative cost to administering a fare, your counting change, and your, or again, your whatever ticketing system, there's, there is a charge to that. So there was, and over time, that went away. One of our grants that we get, actually, you have to have a fare-free system in order to qualify for that specific grant, too. So there hasn't been a recent analysis about what would it mean to go back to that system, but it was instituted and changed over time.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. How big's, if you know off the top of your head, the grant that is connected to being fare-free?
I don't, off the top of my head, know which one that is, so I'd have to get back to you.
Fair enough.
So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest something, because I think that we also have to pick an election, and I think that there's a lot of time. And so maybe, maybe what the motion is, is to direct staff to prepare the information. We're not, we're not committing to anything, and maybe part of what the report back is, is answers to those questions.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, and I think a lot of citizens would, too. So totally support that.
You want to make a motion, amend it to my motion?
Well, I don't think we need to amend it, because I think, I think we can include this as direction back to council, that we, or excuse me, to staff, that we want this information included in the packet that we're going to actually consider and potentially dock it.
Sure.
A ballot measure.
Yeah. Could I just add?
So do we have people to look into that?
Sir, hang on a second, sir. Actually, we're out of public comment right now, so, okay.
I was just going to say, I think it's entirely appropriate to identify the costs to the community, and the information that goes before the voters should rank that out. And I think that it's important to understand that the benefits, and this is for the community to judge, the benefits of a transit system aren't just for the riders of the system, they're for the entire community, in the sense that all of those, if you were to replace those riders with individuals in their own cars, we would have significantly more congestion on our city streets, more wear and tear on our streets, more air quality issues. So, you know, there are a variety of points to be considered. But again, it's a community decision, and I would respect that either way. The other thing I'd point out is that, and I don't want this to devolve into a debate over how we should dice up the general fund for services, as Councilmember Palmer mentioned earlier, we have a lot. Part of what makes a community a community are the amenities that it offers. And people in our community do expect and enjoy amenities that they don't pay for on a per-user basis, because it's what communities have. I would say our city parks fall under that category. Our library largely falls under that category. If you want to get down to a per-user cost per discrete visit at the library, is very competitive, and I don't mean that in a positive way, in terms of cost, on a per-user basis, we are effectively subsidizing the use of the library for the community, which is entirely appropriate. I use it myself. My family's used it. The community enjoys it and really expects it. But it is not cheap. It has a significantly higher budget than most people would expect. But it's a value that we in the community have embraced. And I think we all know our situation with our capital costs, with our park system, our pool, and so on. So I want to be really careful, because I don't want to cherry pick, you know, $31 per ride, or $16 per ride, or whatever, because if we get down to how many books do you need to check out of the library to make it pay, it's not going to work. So I think that that, that's a, that's kind of a dead end in the sense of justification one way or the other. I just want to mention that, because I think it's entirely fair. We should always be transparent with the community when it comes to the cost of providing services, including transit, including library, including the parks, including our police department, our all general fund services. So just say that.
My only reply to that, I think, I mean, I disagree a little bit. I don't think we're, and nobody's even discussing, like, you go and pick up a book at the, off a shelf at the library, and you got to throw a quarter in the machine. I know back in the 90s, going to high school, I had a card for Metro in the Seattle area. I still paid $60 a quarter for that. It helps subsidize the cost. And transportation, you know, it costs money. We've got streets, and our street fund is a little low right now. We're cutting back on certain maintenance. So I don't think it's inappropriate for anybody to question, should this service, you know, be, you know, have, have skin in the game for the riders that use it? It's not something everybody uses. It's a luxury, I think, for a community our size. It's a substantial cost, even with grants. So my only ask, and Mayor Elliott addressed it, is let's look at what a subsidized model really would look like, and maybe we don't kind of raise, or go back and ask for as much money.
Okay. So I'm suggesting that we go ahead and vote on the initial motion, which is effectively to design, research the two-tenths under the transit sales tax option moving into 2026, and we will receive back a report mid-June?
Likely mid-June or early July, yes.
Okay. And from that, then we can provide a specific direction as to what we want to see on the ballot. And it'll include the subsidy model, what the revenue trends are, all of that stuff. Okay? So that's what we're voting on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes. And I would like to continue the conversation and deal with the streets.
Yeah.
I guess I would like, I would also, you know, encourage somebody to maybe make a motion to bring a similar report back that, you know, potentially begins to close the gap on our street fund.
That's exactly what I was going to make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we ask city staff to present a report associated with the cost of one tenth of its percent to fund a dedicated, to create a dedicated fund for street maintenance.
And that's out of the transportation benefit district.
That is correct.
Which we're currently, okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and second to have staff prepare a plan and report back on 8.1% for transportation system, infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, under the transportation benefit district taxing model. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye opposed. That motion passes. We're moving to item 10B, page 88, which is sleep center and cold weather shelter discussion. There will be an opportunity to public comment.
Okay. I'll present from here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heidi Behrens, Sternaway City Manager. So this item is a continuation from your joint study session with the county commissioners earlier this month. And, let's see here. So basically, it sets up a request to, for council direction to essentially put the item of developing a year-round emergency sleep center, we were calling it, in Ellensburg, to discontinue siting of that and focus efforts on establishing a seasonal cold weather shelter site and services in connection with the county and also our community. And just a little bit of background for those who haven't been following this recently. Over the last year, we've had some changes in our community priorities, and there have been other external factors that have really decreased the urgency for a year-round sleep center at this time. The most recent point-in-time census, which takes place in January of every year, actually saw a reduction in the number of unsheltered and sheltered individuals in our community. It was the first time we saw a bend in that curve. In addition, the grant's past decision offered local governments, and this was the Supreme Court that provided a decision on that, given local governments' greater ability to enact and enforce criminal penalties for acts like public camping or sleeping. And even in localities where limited local shelter space contributes to these acts. And I guess, in addition, the siting costs and developing for, and construction and, excuse me, constructing and operating a year-round sleep center have escalated. The number of sites, as we left the meeting at, with the joint, the joint meeting with the county commissioners last June, we had four specific sites, and all of those sites had some significant either purchase cost or purchase and development cost, including subdivision costs, credit improvement, utility costs as well, in addition to purchasing and constructing and the shelters themselves and operating those. Our initial assessment by our, for our feasibility report had some errors, which also created some distrust amongst your decision-makers as well. And so, so the costs really have escalated over time, and at this point, we don't have the funding available, and the ability for the state to provide some supportive funding is uncertain as well. Our Affordable Housing Commission, over time, has continued to work and focus its efforts on implementing our housing action plan. We have a number of active sites in place and making sure that we're continuing to invest in housing affordability and different types of housing across, and making sure we're helping the affordability factor to be extended on those that might be expiring. We've also had some advances in the behavioral health services with the additional one-tenth of, one-tenth of 1% funding that the county enacted, that's getting out in the community and helping provide some supportive services for folks experiencing homelessness and other folks experiencing behavioral health challenges in our community. And this last year, we, in partnership with the county, and also our community members, hosted a seasonal cold weather shelter, which was quite successful, the reduction in estimated cost for operation because of the amount of participation in volunteers to help facilitate that site. And the county and city worked on sharing the costs of that as well. We know that seasonal shelters do save lives and are a critical service, and our request would be for, for council essentially to provide direction to discontinue the siting of a sleep center at this time, and to continue to focus our efforts in partnership with the county and community to, to host a cold weather shelter.
So to set the tone, and again, I think most of, if not all of, the council members that are present today did participate in the joint meeting with the county. I think just to sort of reiterate, this is not, you know, a complete walk away from, you know, any supportive housing or any emergency housing that we might do. There is a facility that looks significantly more economical and may have some versatility. There is a partnership with one of the local churches that may help us resolve the immediate need or sort of most of the need. And so this is not us walking away from it, it's looking at the reality that there may be a better way to do this.
Yep.
That is more cost-effective, so.
I'll provide some more comments here, but first, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to discontinue.
Actually, hold on, I think, I'm going to get public comment first.
Oh, sorry. Man, I'm really off tonight, sorry.
Did anybody want to speak to this issue? I saw somebody raise their hand. I thought, then we'll do our motion.
Oh, and online, one online.
Okay, we'll get online after, Mr. Keller.
Pat Keller, Kitnes County. I have a real problem with this sleep center concept ongoing. We kennel dogs better. Okay? 6 o'clock, come in, 9 o'clock, or we moved it to 8, hit the road, Jack. What's the temperature out there? Pretty cold. I mean, it, it, the model that it's based on is off the gospel model, the union, you know, the waterfront, where, hey, come on in, get a little religion, get your hour of religion, we'll feed you, put you up for the night, if you want to stay longer, let's do a little chore, get you converted to giving up your bad habits. But it doesn't work in a public model, okay? We need emergency shelter. If you see someone, there should be someplace to go. One of the big things out of this that I heard in your, your deal was that, with your joint meeting, it was, boy, they really appreciated getting a shower once a week. Boy, what a bonus. A shower once a week. That's, that's what your sleep center was. Okay? There is a way to resolve the shower issue. You don't need both bathrooms at main and third. You can close, you can make one a joint-use bathroom, and then on the other one, you can close it, and you can put a shower in there with the bathroom. Okay? can close it and you can put a shower in there with the bathroom, okay? How it's used, how it works out, we got a lot of volunteers in our community that made the sleep center work, but after 124 days, you have not. Okay? Let's give them a shower if they want it every day. Let's not give them shower passes to go down to the pool who don't swim. Now, as to the emergency shelter, we have emergency shelter. We housed 22 people inmates in the bottom of the safety building before we built the new jail. That space is there today. The meal plan that the jail contracts is $5 a day. Hey, you need a place to stay? Come on down, we'll feed you. Maybe after three, seven, 21, 30 days, maybe they'll wake up and go, gotta make some life choices. Okay? We have the facilities. We don't need to be spending $200 a night on a sleep center. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
You bet the person online, dude.
Hello, my name is Thursday Muse Voss. I live at East Juniper Avenue. I am begging the council to reconsider canceling the plans for the proposed sleep center. I feel that a shelter for our homeless neighbors is absolutely vital. Each and every person is worth the cost and the time that building the shelter will demand. Every person deserves to have a safe place to sleep. Please don't give up on vulnerable members of our community. Thank you for your time.
And, and so just for both the virtual audience and the, and the people in town, the idea that we're not going to work towards a solution to provide emergency shelter and cold weather shelter for people is not what actually we're sort of canceling out. We're cancel, we're talking about moving on from the concept of sort of the sleep shack shelter component. So, so that's all we're talking about here, is, is moving on from that concept, so. Because there, there are some ideas that have popped up in partnerships that we could potentially enter into.
Yeah. There you go. Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to discontinue the siting of the sleep center year-round emergency shelter facility in Ellensburg and focus efforts on establishing a seasonal cold weather shelter site and services.
Second.
So we have a motion and second to discontinue the sleep center siting process and to focus our efforts on establishing a seasonal cold weather shelter site and services. Any discussion amongst council?
This is just more a comment and education for the community here. Some of you have been part of all these conversations, some of you are stepping in for the very first time. Many of you know that I serve on the Affordable Housing Commission, and we'll be getting to some other items here shortly, talking about that. Affordable Housing Commission looks at the full spectrum of affordable housing, trying to help out with the homeless issues that we have in our community. How do we help out to get into transitional housing? How do we get them to permanent housing? This is a full-spectrum solution. And so the funds that we work with and what we dedicate to is trying to help out fill those gaps. And so some of you know parts and pieces of this puzzle, but there's a lot of things that we're going to be talking about, and we'll spend upon that here shortly when we start talking about some of these other affordable housing things. But to what Rich was talking about, this doesn't end the conversation about how we deal with homelessness in our community, cold weather shelter, those kinds of things. This is just one thing that we're canceling out simply because of feasibility, sustainability, and quite frankly, a lot of barriers that are working against us financially right now. And so we are looking at other options that we work with, not only the Affordable Housing Commission, Commission, but also our permitting commission, our planning, planning commission on how do we remove those barriers to help out developers to come here to help provide that affordable housing. So general comment.
I would just say that I, I support this motion. I was very hopeful that we could make a, a sleep center work in our community, but I think the writing is on the wall, so to speak, and we cannot at this point in time. I, I don't think that we should abandon that thought if something should come along that makes it more feasible to do something like this. A separate, separate living areas for homeless people works a whole lot better than, than the model that we have right now for the cold weather shelter, although that works well also. So I, I, I support this motion. I have to say I'm a little disappointed, but it'll be okay.
So Heidi, I don't know, you can answer, is there an account for why the numbers went down? Did they receive help from our community and they're now sheltered? Are they out of area? Do we know?
I don't know specifically, but we do have an increased number of affordable housing units, and so I would think that there's a correlation, but I don't know the exact story.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Two will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. How long's your report? Multiple pages.
It is. I can be quick when we get there.
Okay, we're going to keep going then. Item 11A, page 93. This is consideration of funding award for Hope Source, affordable housing acquisition application, and there will be an opportunity to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lily Frye, Housing Program Manager. We received an application last March, sorry, in late March from Hope Source requesting $1.2 million for four duplexes, which is eight total units, specifically six studio units and two one-bedroom units at South Pearl and West Washington. On April 30th, the Affordable Housing Commission considered this application and discussed with the applicants. They discussed the cost per square foot, the cost per unit. The AHC specifically asked for lowered rents and longer affordability period. Hope Source has reviewed that and has been unable to, to change either parameter, which they will discuss in greater detail when presenting their proposal. The commission also discussed the potential for other funding sources, including a potential increase to the county funding, which has already been allocated for this project at an amount of $250,000, which cannot be increased in their current funding cycle. And due to the limited timing of the, the potential sale, the Affordable Housing Commission recommended the proposal to council with the consideration for the lowest rents and longest affordability period possible. The funding for this request is available from the Affordable Housing Sales Tax Funding, which we have stated we could fund up to $2.5 million in capital projects this year. And Susan and Hope Source will share more details on their proposal and answer any questions we might have. And staff would recommend moving to direct staff to prepare an affordable housing agreement with Hope Source for the purchase of the property and units at 211 South Pearl.
Questions of staff or from council? Okay, and you said Hope Source is going to make a presentation?
Counsel, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you about something near and dear to Hope Source's heart, and that is continuing to provide more and more units of affordable housing. We have, since 2007, made it our business to either renovate buildings through tax credits that would have gone market rate and kept them at affordable, affordability, and also to build new units to add to the housing stock. That's what we are able to do in order to help the clients that we serve move from unstable housing or, or no housing, move from instability on their way through the, the progression of opportunities like transitional housing into affordable housing. And ultimately, our hope for them, of course, is that they eventually move into market and buy a house. So it felt like it would be good to put context to the decision that we're talking about tonight, so I wanted to go and just review for the people that didn't see some of this beforehand, how we got here to where we are. And then John Raymond, the COO of Hope Source, will tell you a bit about the financial end of it. This was a photo that was in process, and, but that's what they'll look like, and that's where they sit now. And here's the timeline for how we got here. Hope Source purchased a lot, just half a block down from where the Addison project is proposed for. We purchased it in 2019 with our own funds to put veteran housing in there. And we worked with Representative Schreier for support of that. When we, and we were going to build on it. Pathways Partnership came into being, and with Pathways, which is the Knights Inn Hotel renovation, and 78 units of affordable housing, new housing to be built behind that, they could increase the number of veteran units that were potentially possible for us if we put the, put the money from the Pearl Street property, from the, from Representative Schreier, put it into the Pathways project. So we did. So we still had the piece of property, but we were providing more for the veterans, and it worked well. This last year, Stalder Properties approached us to purchase the eight condos that you saw in the first slide on, on Pearl with the exchange of the property we owned further down on Pearl. So Stalder, in January of '24, had begun the process of building what you saw, and had gotten all of their permits issued and begun construction. When we entered the conversation with Stalder, and it was determined that that would be a good, good, good thing to do, it had more units, and it would serve our community much better, the county pledged $250,000 for that project. We also then contributed the property we bought, which was $200,000, into that project. So that's part of the funding that we brought to the table already, including what we are asking now the city for is to fill the gap that remains, which is 1.2 million. It's expected to be ready for occupancy in September of this year, so it's a very quick turnaround, we're happy about that. And we will be self-managing that property. And now I'm going to ask John Raymond to come up and talk through the income guidelines for that property and the pro forma.
Good evening, Council. John Raymond, CEO of Hope Source. I believe in some information that was provided to you earlier, we shared the, the Washington State Housing Finance Commission income and rent limits for affordable housing. These, those are the sheets that you might have in your packet that indicate the rent limits, or the income limits for people at 20% up to 80% of the area median income. These are all families or individuals that are considered low-income, and the rent limits that a affordable housing project can charge for those particular households. We looked at the 2025 rates and felt they were a little high, so what we did is look at the 2024 rates, which were about 9% lower than what you currently see here. And out of that 2024 rate, $1,039, we backed out the utility allowance of $153. So we arrived at the limit that an individual at a 60% of the area median income would pay of $866, and that is in, in our pro forma. So we are considerably lower than the amount that the state and the Finance Commission would say is allowable to, to charge someone to live in those units. You can look at the, the individual income for a single person at $45,000 a year, and if you do the math, you'll see that $1,100, based on this model, is about 30% of their income, of their monthly income. And again, we don't want people to be overly rent burdened. I know that many individuals in the community pay way more than 30% of their income towards rent, particularly low-income residents, and so we wanted to make sure that we were well below the limit of 30%. And if you look at the rents that we are proposing of $866 for a studio and $960 for a one-bedroom, you'll see that those equate to about 25% of the monthly income for individuals that are earning that 60% of the area median income. So the pro forma was based on, on those numbers. We did look at all of our expenses based on our, our actual costs, if there were other properties, and the experience that we have operating those properties at Pine Place and our Core Street Apartments. And the pro forma shows that at the, the end of the year, was about $12,000 in positive cash flow remaining, which is fairly skinny for a housing project. That doesn't take, it does, it does take into consideration some legal costs, but it does not take into consideration what happens if we have individuals that don't pay the rent, and whether an individual, individuals may need to go through an eviction process. Eviction process costs $3,000 to $4,000 each, and they're, they're very, very costly. Certainly managing the property ourselves and doing the work to qualify and certify the individuals, we don't see that as, as a huge possibility, but certainly it is a possibility. So we were really grateful for the opportunity to, to bring this in front of you. We think it's a great opportunity for individuals to be able to move into new studio or one-bedroom apartments in the property on Pearl Street. The Stalders done a great job of putting that building together. They also have built the Pine Place project as well, and those units are, are holding up extremely well, and we're serving the community the best way we can.
Counsel, questions of, for Hope Source?
I have, I have a question. John, it, it says here, I just wanted to confirm, the duration for the low-income rent rates on this project is 25 years, is that correct?
25 years, yes.
But you're not able to sustain that beyond the 25 years?
Well, if you look at the, the cost of repairs, maintenance, and reserve for projects of this type, after 25 years, you're doing major renovations on the building, and so being able to make those repairs, reserves won't, will not be enough to be able to affect all those repairs. We'll probably need to bring in some other financing, do that work, and then that other financing will need to be retired, and that's why we would look to be able to use potentially market rate at that point in time, be able to help retire that debt.
Thanks.
I'm going to ask questions that I already know to answer to, but this is for, for the sake of the audience, so, so that they are aware. Could you kind of talk about the county's portion into this and what their limitations as far as being able to, to, to pay into this as well?
Well, if you, if you look at this, this slide here, it talks about the, the cost per door. For Addison Place, if you look at the contribution from the city and the county, I believe the county contributed about $30,000 per door, and the city is looking at a contribution of roughly $150,000 per door. The balance of the cost is basically borne by Hope Source to be able to get these units up and operating. You can see that the cost per unit is relatively inexpensive when you look at other affordable housing-type projects. Projects that are funded through tax credits, through other sorts of bond funding, other financing, have multiple layers of, of significant cost associated with those types of deals, and also have, particularly with the Pathways project and other large projects, you've got a significant amount of infrastructure you need to bring to the site versus using a city lot with infrastructures right there at the curb.
One other question. Just for, just clarification on a comment that Susan made about the veterans' housing. You are comfortable with the trades and everything you've done, that you're going to be able to address veteran housing in our community?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. I think on the Pearl Street property, the existing piece that we own, we were limited to about five units because of the size of the project. But with the funding that we're able to leverage from Representative Schreier, we're able to provide 12 units of veteran housing at the Pathways property. So we're going to be able to double the number of units and I think we'll have every opportunity to serve the veterans that we need to serve.
Great. Thank you.
Another question. I like that you have the comparison up there on some of these other properties. Pine Place and Pathways, could you provide information as far as AMI associated with those properties? Do you have those?
Well, Pine Place is a youth transitional housing unit. So for that particular property, which was funded by the state, you have to be under 25 years old and I believe that the income is 50% AMI or below. You also need to be a homeless youth, but a homeless has many different definitions. In this particular context of this particular funding source, you can actually be a couch surfing. And if you are a couch surfer, you're considered somebody who's homeless and we could house you in that location.
Then Pathways?
Pathways is a mix of 30%, 50% and some 60% units. We also have some additional Apple Health Home dollars and veterans' funding. So there'll be a mix of different types of individuals that are going to be housed there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience?
Sandy Elliott, 1114 Seattle Avenue. My question is, we owned and managed a low-rent subsidized housing location. Now, mind you, this is Denny in downtown Seattle, but still, the maintenance issue was huge and also the eviction procedure was tough. In fact, what stood between me and a knife was the sheriff one day. So we've seen the horror stories of low-cost housing. Have you, are you prepared to attend to these issues and the vetting that has to go on? Susan?
Thank you. Yes, the, one of the things that we know a lot about is vetting people for properties. And we have, when they come in, they are, there's an extensive assessment that's done that helps not just what they came in for. For example, if they come in and they say, "I need a place to stay", that's the starting point, but we're looking at all of the other factors in their life that may have to be addressed along the way. So whole-person care is what that's called. And we, not everybody gets housing. Some people get what they need in order to move toward that. But in coming into one, of course, we have the same assessment you do. If you had any apartment building, you're looking at, are they able to pay that kind of rent? If they don't, do they have opportunity to increase their employment so they can pay that rent? And then you can move forward with them. But you understand a lot more about them. Is there, you know, there are some criminal issues. There are certain felonies that cannot access the properties. But beyond that, we're very understanding of the fact that if people have had some bad times in their life, that doesn't keep them from being a good tenant. And our case managers work closely with them and our navigators so that they have that constant encouragement and help and moving forward every time we meet with them. So there is a lot less fallout because we're attending to them all the time until they're stable. Does that answer the question?
And just so for future, direct questions towards council, we'll get you guys the answer. Don't, direct deal. Thank you.
Carrie Vickers, County, and Ellensburg is my city. I am firsthand a victim from the people that have been vetted by one of the units in our community. Spurling Apartments is a transitional housing unit and I lived directly across the street from the Spurling Apartments exit. Things transitioned from this time of Spurling opening, but they went through a couple of different bouts of management. The first round of management, there was an overdose in the manager's home and a death. There were police presence where seven police vehicles were on the street at one time from all three different law enforcement agencies, state, county and city. Guns drawn. There were different times where de-escalation with guns drawn were done on our street. We had 32 children that lived on our street. I was in low-income housing. I was the minority group. Okay, my child, one of my children, was a victim to one of the children that lived at Spurling who came over into the property of my yard when I lived in low-income housing, kicked my son down and broke his leg. The police came for that event as well. There were multiple law enforcement situations that came into the community because of the transitional housing and the lack of vetting that happened at the Spurling Apartments. So I would urge, urge city council to really take a look at how that is being managed before putting 1.2 million dollars towards more of that in our community. I am a firsthand resident, I was city at that time, if that makes a difference to anybody. I was a city resident. I have a child that is a minority. I have two kids with IEPs, a kid with a BIP. If you want a minority group, I was that person. And I was victimized by the people that were living at Spurling Apartments. So just because transitional help, helps people that are homeless or in a bad state doesn't mean it helps the other people that were in a hard place. We were in a down place and I was kicked. My son, literally, was kicked while we were down as a single mom. I just really implore you to please take high consideration into how transitional hand is handled, transitional housing especially. I'm full-on for helping out the veterans. I just think that our county really, our city needs to really be aware of what the vetting process is and whether we're hiring somebody locally or a program that is on the west side managing the facilities. And then I'm curious if that 1.2 million is under a contract to pay back or just a free cash cow from our city? Just a curiosity. I know cash cow is rude, but y'all know what I mean.
There's another speaker.
Good evening, Council. Logan Cook, City of Ellensburg. So I just pulled up Zillow really quick and I looked at studio apartments and running the numbers based off of what I think this gentleman shared back there. $886 for a studio apartment. I found one for $750. I found one for $900. You can find a two-bed, one-bath for about $1,500 right now. You split that, that's $750, so that's cheaper than paying for the studio. When I graduated high school, I got a job, I moved out, I paid $400 a month and I lived with six different people in a five-bed house. It's doable, you know? It's not exactly easy by any means, but sometimes you have to do what you have to do. You can't always rely on the government to help you out. I don't think it's the government's job necessarily to do that. And 1.2 million dollars is a lot of money to spend, especially when we're suffering in other departments as well. It always comes up, like with our pool. I think that 1.2 million dollars could go a lot further investing in other areas of our government rather than in low-income housing, especially when we have affordable housing not sponsored by the government. Thank you.
Somebody online? There's somebody online first.
Mary Monahan, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
We can hear you. Oh, we can hear Drew.
We can hear Drew.
Tired of hearing Drew.
Mary Monahan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mr. Keller, why don't you go first and we'll see if the online person can get back on?
Pat Keller, Kittensas County. I'll cut to the chase. I think you should put some deed restrictions on this, the 25-year affordability clause. I didn't bring my glasses. The target population, I think, should be 30% AMI. I think the person that lives in these apartments should have lived in the county for two years and demonstrated a work history of two years. This is an excellent project. You see some of this nationwide where they're buying existing housing or new housing and putting it right in production. Two times zero is zero. That's what's down at the Pathways. I don't care if you double the Pathways, there's still nothing down there. Pathways with the Knights Inn has been promised, you know, 17, now it's 34. Now it's, who knows what it is? I'm sure the project's moving forward, but it's still zero. It hasn't done anything. There's auditing, I turned my comments in to you formally. There's an auditing provision. HopeSource, I really like some of the things HopeSource does, but they're very opaque. I can't public record, record request them. The finances things that they mentioned, okay, let's check that out. Let's see what they're talking about. I think this project, it's not $196,000 a door, it's $25,000 a door. Kittensas County is funding this project at 87% out of hide. They should be able to find qualified people in the 30% AMI. If you look at your Ahab report, that's where people are rent burdened. There's 2,000 people rent burdened. That's, they're using 50% or more of their income to pay rent. This is a beautiful project. There is no homeless, there is no veteran, there is no transitional. The market group that's in the proposal is 60% AMI. It could be the guy tomorrow off the street. It's 60% AMI. That is your market. I think we should make it 30% AMI. Pick up people that have proven themselves for two years here, work history for two years. They grow up to 60%. There should be a move-out clause. But this is an excellent project to get something done and not have another two times zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Do we have the online person?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Absolutely, go ahead.
My name is Mary Monahan. I'm a resident of the City of Ellensburg and I'm representing myself. I want to thank you, HopeSource and the council for considering this and HopeSource for providing all of the information that you have. I am supportive of housing that meets the needs of our residents and their financial constraints. But I also have a quick question about the numbers. When we talked about the county match with the city match, I'm assuming, and I'm not sure this is a correct assumption, that this housing would be available to both city and county residents. So I'm curious as how this match came to be. It feels like the county is not paying, could pay more. So, and, but maybe I'm missing something. It feels like the city is bearing the burden of this cost. And I was wondering if you could share some of the details on how that came to be? And thank you.
Ms. Monahan, so you're going to go and finish your comments and then we'll see if we can get you an answer?
My comments are finished.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have an answer to that question or can we get one later?
I do.
So the city has a 0.1% sales tax for affordable housing. So that's the source of this funding for, for the city component. The county does not have that tax provision. They have a slightly different source for their affordable housing funding and they issued an RFP this year for $250,000 total. They actually expanded that to fund two projects at that maximum of $250,000, but they do not have additional funds remaining for allocation to affordable housing projects from the county this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Anybody else? Okay, before we go into considering this request, I'm going to recuse myself because I am a member of HopeSource's board. So I'll run it, you guys do it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to direct staff to prepare affordable housing agreement with HopeSource for the acquisition of the property at eight housing units at 211 S. Pearl Street and approve the necessary budget adjustments.
Second.
So I have a motion in second to, and I got to read this one, I was unprepared. Direct staff to prepare the affordable housing agreement for the property at 211 South Pearl Street and approve the necessary budget adjustments. Discussion amongst council.
Yeah, I want to make some comments here, just to address a couple of city citizen comments and then kind of talk about big picture. Like I mentioned, I'm on the Affordable Housing Commission. So I want to talk about the allocation for this. So remember what we just said as far as the tax allocation for affordable housing that the city has established to tax. So switching it from one fund to another is something that can be done, but we try to just keep those buckets to where they at. In this particular case, the Affordable Housing Commission has built up essentially a coffer of $2.5 million. Lily, correct me anytime if I say something incorrect. That means we haven't been spending money on affordable housing. We haven't been spending it. We've been building it up and not addressing the problem. We've been trying to figure out what's happening. The issue that we've been doing or we've been reviewing is that we have been working with developers on what's the barriers. So the Affordable Housing Commission, the Planning Commission have been sitting down with developers and collaborating on what are we doing as a city government that's preventing you from building affordable housing here? Now, honestly, it takes time to be able to understand what those restrictions are and to remove those obstacles, but we had great dialogue. And this project is an example of that dialogue when we have the Affordable Housing Commission and the city staff and the Planning Commission working together to work with private partners, developers and financiers to remove the barriers to make it easier to bring affordable housing in our community. Now, you made some great examples as far as the cost, as far as units here compared to this. 60% AMI, even from an affordable housing standpoint, we're like, my goodness, that's a lot of money that is coming up. And to the concern as far as who is going in those units, it's pretty close to market rate. And even from an affordable housing standpoint, that's really unaffordable. But unfortunately, our classification as a county says that we have to have a minimum 80% AMI, which makes it higher, above market rate. And so unfortunately, all the factors associated with upper county combining with lower county makes our rates really unaffordable. So it's really difficult to find properties that can actually go for 30% AMI. It is extremely difficult. So finding 60% is also difficult, but when we find it, we have to make quick decisions on what makes sense. $1.2 million is a lot of money, absolutely. But on an annual basis, we put away $800,000 associated with affordable housing. That means with this allocation, we'll still have 1.3 left in this fiscal year to deal with other affordable housing opportunities. That means we'll still get $800,000 next year, if that's the budget that we're approving, to be able to continue to fill those coffers. And so when you go back and look at the cost of this particular project versus some of the other ones that we've had, the cost per door, the cost per unit is a thing that's really appetizing for this project. We removed a lot of barriers between Affordable and Planning Commission so that we can work developers. This is outside-the-box thinking, which citizens like you have asked us to do. Remove barriers so it makes it easier for developers. And that's what we did. And so now we have a property in which somebody has already done most of the work, most of the risk, quite honestly. Because once you're out of the ground, if you're in construction, you know, once you get out of the ground and you're working on the envelope, most of your risk is already mitigated. And we're able to come in here and still provide affordable housing in our community that still needs it. And we still have plenty of money to be able to do other opportunities with more than half a year left. So it's a really great project. Affordable Housing Commission did have a lot of comeback, a lot of conversation with HopeSource on a lot of the questions that you guys are talking about. And through that dialogue, we were able to identify we were able to identify that this project makes sense. We do have concerns as far as the AMI, very, very close to market rate. We're still concerned about as far as the length of affordability at 25 years. We'd love to see it longer. But at the end of the day, this is a really great project that we could add to our inventory really quickly and have people in. So.
Just for point of clarification, we can't move money in dedicated sales tax to any other area.
No, no, no. Sorry, if I said that, yeah, I did not mean to say that.
It's not hard to do. You can't do it.
Yeah, yeah. If I said that, I apologize. I wasn't trying to say that. So.
Okay.
So are we ready to vote? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstained on this one.
And I'm recused or abstained or whatever. Okay.
Good. So we are moving on to 11B, which is a 44-page one. Professional Services Agreement with SCJ Alliance for Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Dan was there. I bet Dan was there.
Should I?
That's not Dan.
Do you need help? Oh, I'm fine. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Stacy Henderson, Planning Manager. I'm discussing tonight the proposed Professional Services Agreement with SCJ Alliance for Consultant Services for the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. In respect of your time, I'll try to keep this brief, but I do want to go over the background of this requirement, an explanation of our process thus far, and staff analysis, just to help understand how we got here. The city of Ellensburg is a fully planning city under the Growth Management Act and therefore is required to conduct a thorough review of our city comprehensive plan every 10 years, referred to as the periodic update. Important reasons to update this plan include, but are not limited to, the incorporation of new population, housing and employment projections, as well as new zoning and land use codes, or land use needs. This is our chance as a community to deep dive into where we are at, what is working and what may need to be tweaked. It's our chance as a community to have a discussion of what do we want to see for the future of Ellensburg? What do we envision for the next 20 years to bring to this community? In order to adequately update the comprehensive plan in a way that truly reflects community voices, needs and planning, extensive studies are required, such as traffic studies, land capacity analysis and climate studies, just to name a few. This update also includes updating the current comprehensive plan document and local development regulations to reflect new state requirements and updating the needs of the community based on findings from studies and public outreach. SCJ and their team of subcontractors that they put together bring expertise to help our community gather accurate data, conduct thorough studies and adequately analyze this information to help us with our city's plan. As seen in the scope of work, starting on page 141 of your council packet, SCJ will help with project management, but to each of their phases that they provided in the scope of work, they bring technical assistance and expertise to help ensure this periodic update is successful for our community. Leland Consulting Group is one of the subcontractors as part of the SCJ Alliance team. Their bio can be found in the Statement of Qualifications in your packet, starting on page 171. And they bring expertise to help with our required housing economic development and land capacity analysis. For housing, through a meeting with our Affordable Housing Manager, Leland Consulting was able to accurately scope their work to help with the housing element. And just moving forward, element for the comprehensive plan, that's what the chapters are. That's just what they call them. Their scope of work, Leland's scope of work includes working with staff to provide updated demographic and housing information to help with the required housing needs assessment, as well as a racially, as well as working on a racially disparate impacts background analysis report and policy review as required by the current GMA guidelines. And they're also proposing, are working on a required middle housing recommendation report. Another thing that the Leland subcontractors would help with is the land capacity analysis report. Using city, county, this is a really technical report that we could really use their expertise on. Using city, county and state GIS data, Leland will analyze land capacity for new jobs and housing units to meet all allocated growth targets developed by the Kittas County COG Group. This is a technical special analysis accounting for net developable land, critical areas, current or projected infrastructure constraints, and assumed housing and job densities based on current development regulations, past development trends and expected future trends, to determine whether Ellensburg can meet future projected housing needs. This land capacity analysis results, the land capacity analysis results will inform development of an updated future land use map, which is part of the periodic update. Cascadia, also in your packet, part of the team, are the environmental planning specialists, and they're part of the SCJ Alliance team as well. This year, a new chapter or element is required to be added, the climate element. The new element is intended to help communities understand climate impacts and hazards in our community. Adding a new chapter will require Cascadia's expertise as they develop a climate impact summary memo report. This involves analysis regarding possible hazards to our community and how we can be more resilient, looking at things like stormwater flooding and slope stability, heat events, wildfires, smoke, drought, amongst others. Public outreach and utilization of technical tools is really important in this step, and those are expertise that Cascadia will bring to the process. They also will help staff analyze the current environmental element or chapter, which includes a lot of information and requirements regarding our critical areas to see if the required climate, new climate element might combine with the environmental chapter and not necessarily be its own chapter. The last subconsultant, Fair and Peers, are the transportation experts, a part of the SCJ Alliance team. They met with the city engineer to discuss an adequate and needed scope of work to update the transportation element before providing this information to you. Their scope of work proposes to analyze the current auto, freight, transit, bike and pedestrian modes and will include maps, safety data and existing, reviewing maps, safety data and existing facility maps. Their technical analysis will inform projected transportation projects, needs and goals into the future. Again, this is our next 20-year plan. Fair and Peers is a group that has prior experience with our city, including helping with the last periodic update 10 years ago, which comes as an added bonus that they understand specific Ellensburg needs and resources. In addition to technical reports, as you can see in our scope of work, SCJ Alliance and their teams will be assisting with policy framework and ensuring that our updated comprehensive plan, the process we follow and our city code are in compliance with required new updates per our state code, GMA requirements and commerce requirements. They have specialists to help assist with this and will be providing data to staff. Another part of this plan that you saw in your packet is regarding public participation. So community outreach is very important to staff and to this process. And SCJ and their team will be able to help provide expertise through their experience regarding suggested outreach methods, materials and approaches to truly start a productive dialogue as a community. An extensive public participation plan has actually already been developed by staff to receive input from the community, and that said participation plan will come before council at a future meeting for adoption. They also have the ability to provide tools for us, the SCJ Alliance does, such as Social Pinpoint, which is a community engagement platform, to provide map-based surveys and other tools for us to gain information through the process. So this is just an overview of some of the required work that will take place through the periodic update process. The Washington State Legislature recently adopted SSB 5558, extending the deadline for completing this update to December 31st of next year instead of June 30th. But there's still a lot of work to complete, even considering the extended deadline. Completing this work thoroughly, accurately and with extensive public participation will require SCJ's specialized technical work, knowledge and expertise to ensure a successful 20-year plan that reflects community needs and goals. Just to touch quickly on the process, the Community Development Department issued a request for qualifications in the Daily Record and Seattle Journal of Commerce on March 4th and March 11th with a due date of March 25th of this year. We received seven statements of qualifications during this time period for evaluation. Several city staff were selected to score applications using criteria from the RFQ document we issued. From the scoring process, the consultant teams with the top three scores were selected to interview. Interviews were held on April 9th and staff were able to meet the team members and subconsultant team members during the interview process of each team. The top-scoring team from the interviews, SCJ Alliance, was selected to move forward with this process. In the Statement of Qualifications and in the interview, SCJ Alliance provided several examples of comparable projects, including middle housing studies and other periodic updates of comparable-sized cities. The SCJ Alliance team's Statement of Qualification was included in your packets, which dives deeper into their team and their qualifications. The city has been awarded a total of $275,000. Sorry, is that me? In Department of Commerce, Commerce Grant Funding to help support this periodic update process, including periodic update grant in the amount of $125,000 and a climate planning grant, which would help support the work for the new climate element in an amount of $150,000. As provided in your packet, staff has provided Exhibit A, a complete scope of work, Exhibit B, project schedule, C, payment agreement, and D, a clear breakdown of the budget per task. City staff has ensured that the proposed budget and cost breakdown aligns with grant deliverables and requirements. To ensure an accurate and detailed scope of work and budget, staff has met with SCJ Alliance and the subconsultants several times to discuss this proposed plan. Minor adjustments may still be made to the wording of the agreement, but the final version signed by the city manager will be substantially similar to your attached document. As seen in your packet, the maximum to not exceed contract amount is $530,516.35. The Community Development 2025-2026 budget includes a total of $338,995 for professional services for the periodic update, which also includes the grant funding I prior mentioned. Community Development has also realized a savings of $42,000 in 2025 for Planning Manager and Senior Planner vacancies. Bringing the total available budget from Community Development to $380,995,000. Staff is requesting that the remaining $149,521 of the maximum possible amount be funded from general fund and relevant restricted fund balances. In conclusion, staff recommends council move to approve the Professional Services Agreement with SCJ Alliance for Consultant Services for the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement in substantially similar form and approve the necessary budget adjustments. Thank you.
Council questions for staff.
I have a question. So, thank you, Stacy. That was a nice report. Appreciate all of the consultant help that y'all reached out for and looking forward to this process. I'm concerned about the $149,521.35 from the general fund and relevant restricted fund balances. How much of an impact on the general fund is this actually going to have?
So I will answer that for you. And it would be up to the $149,000 or approximately $150,000. What we will look to do is try to maximize, if we're doing specific economic development work, we have a separate economic development restricted fund, we may be able to support that. So that would come back to you in a supplemental budget, exactly where those dollars would come from. But we do have fund balance. Again, general fund dollars are rare and we try to keep those spread. Again, we try not to use those unless we absolutely have to. But we would come back to you again with the exact dollars of which funds those are coming out of. But we do have the fund balance there. There's just competition for it always.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience? Counsel.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Professional Services Agreement with SCJ Alliance for Consultant Services for the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement in a substantially, or in substantially similar form and approve the necessary budget adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the agreement lined on page 127 of the packet with SCJ Alliance for the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update process. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If they vote aye opposed, that motion passes. City Managers' Report 205.
I will give you the abbreviated version of the City Managers' Report because we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening too, which will also be brief. Wonderful news, our city library and how homes was funded, was awarded CDBG dollars, which are Community Development Block Grant dollars, to help support replacement of the HVAC system. That's about a $2 million project. We have some fund balance left over from our facilities fund, and that will provide the match for that. So good work by our staff as well. It is Bike Month, and as a reminder, Bike Month events, activities culminate on the 31st with an event in Unity Park. We're also doing Coffee with Council at the park that very same day. So there's flyers around town, lots of information on social media, opportunity to do some community rides and participate in an app to actually potentially win a bike. Ellensburg Academy, May 29th. We also have EPD doing a gang awareness community presentation on May 29th. I don't know if I said Ellensburg Academy, May 27th. We do have the parking survey still up. Touch a Truck is scheduled for June 18th, and that is the last day of school, and that is totally fun. We had the opportunity to celebrate Public Works Week with coffee and donuts this morning at the shop and really to celebrate the team of people who provide essential services to our community and do it very well in our community. So, and one of the things I wanted to mention is that at your next, I try to provide a little preview of what's scheduled for the upcoming meeting. I would hope, I'd hope to bring the item to you tonight, but we weren't quite ready to do this. We've been working with outside council to look at options for a public-private partnership to fund the Fieldhouse facility. And we think we have a path through that. We have some details to work out on financing. It would require a public process to do a request for proposals. We think this is a much more affordable option that could bring services to our community in a shorter pathway too. So we'll get some additional information and provide that to you to make sure we're headed in the right direction, the plan that works for you all, and before we would proceed with that. But I'm hoping that will be at your next meeting. And as a reminder, tonight, we do have an executive session scheduled. I think we said five minutes. I'm going to say seven minutes, and there would be no action after that. And one last item, I guess, and Mayor, we received just today a request from Go Rail asking for a letter of support for rail services, essentially for safety and railway crossing support. And typically, council will provide their approval for the mayor's signature on that by motion. And that's all I have.
Do you guys wanna deal with this now or later?
Rail support. I mean, are we talking about crosscars that drop down to, what does that mean?
It's a rail advocacy group.
I'm still lost on the safety factors that they're asking for. Is that what they're looking?
You're, you're asking for advocacy at, there was an open-ended, didn't say specifically. It doesn't need to be.
How about we bring it back, you guys can vote on it.
That works.
Okay, we're gonna do council member reports. Sarah?
None.
Nancy?
Just a couple of things. The, yeah, Commission met, joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. I have two meetings tomorrow morning, one tomorrow night, and that'll fill me out for the month, for the month.
Also attended the meeting with the County Commissioners, two meetings arts commission-related. One was interviewing for appointment to the Arts Commission for two members, two seats, and then a PTAC meeting just last week.
Had a meeting with UAC. We, we had a good conversation regarding electrical contract that's being finalized. Rich, I'll let you take the Kitcom board information. Kitata County Law and Justice Council meets in the future, and then I already talked about Affordable Housing Commission. But one question or comment, I'm gonna ask the city council to excuse me for the November fourth, city council meeting. I will be out of country. So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve an excused absence. I'm sure Councilmember Palmer.
November fourth.
Fourth, is that the Tuesday? No.
Any discussion?
Yes, it's November fourth.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed? All right, you got your excused absence and you gave an excuse. Josh?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, so real quick, we did have a Kitcom board meeting. Staffing's moving in the right direction. We're about to get super busy with holiday weekends, and I would just encourage you to ask people, do not call nine-one-one to find out if daylight savings time, or, you know, how, how long is it gonna be till the road's unblocked and things like that? We're processing a hundred-and-fifty nine-one-one calls for a highly visible incident, and we have to answer them all. And that's with two dispatchers, who are also handling all the emergency radio traffic. So please, use the service for what it was intended to be used for. I did get some feedback from the Developmental Disabilities Board. I serve on that as the mayor. They are concerned about the transit funding. They are looking at that. That is a pathway for some in that group for primary transportation, so just as an FYI. And this is, 'cause I feel like I wanna talk about it. I got selected to be on the commission to, or to, to provide input into FEMA's reorg, or whether or not FEMA even exists. So if you have input into that, I have a conduit to get input. It's gonna happen quickly, and I might be gone in June to meetings. So, right now, they're all virtual. And then the last thing, I will miss, 'cause I didn't tell you why, I will miss the June second meeting, because I'm going to be teaching in California, so. We're moving into an executive session. The RCW is listed, seven minutes and no decision afterwards. So. We're gonna come out and only adjourn.
You already proved it. I just never told you why.